Welcome again, everyone. Welcome to the Moreland City Council's 2020-2021 Flourish Arts Recovery Grant Programme Information Session. So my name's Angela Pamick and I'm the Arts Officer here at Moreland City Council. I'd like to firstly take this opportunity before we begin to acknowledge the traditional custodians in the land on which we meet today, now various locations around Moreland. I'm currently on the land of the Rarangirang and Brungarrang peoples of the Coolang nation. And I pay my respects to their elders, past, present and emerging. I'd also like to take that, to take the opportunity to extend that respect to other First Nations people who are present here today. I acknowledge and deeply respect your cultural heritage, beliefs and continuing relationship with the land, and acknowledge that Aboriginal sovereignty was never ceded. Welcome. So as I said, this presentation will include information on our brand new grant programme and followed by a Q and A session afterwards, during which time you're welcome to pop your videos and microphones back on. And Craig, the Unit Manager at Arts and Culture, and I will be able to answer any questions that you might have. A PDF of this PowerPoint presentation will also be distributed via RedBright to you in the next couple of days, possibly early next week. So excuse me for a moment. So a little bit of housekeeping, as I said, the microphones and videos will be turned off. If you do have a burning question, please do write it in the chat section. Now, I actually can't see the chat section while I'm presenting. So perhaps Craig, if you see there's an urgent question there, maybe you could alert me to that somehow?
Yes, certainly, that won't be a problem.
That would be great, thank you. But otherwise, we'll address all of the questions at the end. And obviously, you know, post this presentation, if there are still people that go beyond the hour, I'm happy to stick around for a little bit of time to answer any other additional questions. And I can also be contacted via email and phone, which I'll give you later on, at any time if you have questions. I am only part-time, so I do tend to find email inquiries are a bit better, because then I have all of the information on what you're wanting to talk about in front of me, and I can actually address those things a little bit easier. But obviously, happy to take phone calls as well. So, the purpose of the Flourish Arts Recovery Grant Programme. So as many of you would know, normally we would have an arts activation and arts investment grant programme, that is, an annual grant programmes that we have. Obviously, the COVID-19 pandemic has had a significant impact on the Australian arts and culture sector, and our Moreland, local Moreland artists are certainly no less impacted than the rest of Australia and in fact, the world. So this was an opportunity that our council has taken to readdress what our regular arts funding programmes are about. And what we've tried to do is to incorporate any amazing project that you would have otherwise have done, either as an arts activation grant or through an arts investment grant, and still allowed for other of those types of projects, but also to broaden what artists were able to do, so that we can directly support artists and arts organisations during this time. And just to make it a little bit easier for everyone. And you know, many of us in the Arts and Culture team are also practising artists and arts managers. So you know, we're not far removed from what's actually happening out there. We totally understand the difficulty that you're all facing at the moment, and we absolutely want to be there to be able to support you. So the objectives of this particular Flourish Arts Recovery Grant, in addition to the normal things that our arts activation and arts investment grants would include, and that is to strengthen the capacity of local artists and arts organisations to develop and deliver quality recovery projects for the wider community, to support the local arts ecology in navigating new models of engagement, to build connection and engagement through community-led arts and cultural activities, and to support and encourage more people to engage with arts and culture in Moreland. But again, you know, we just really want to stress, this is absolutely about supporting local artists and arts organisations to survive the impacts of COVID-19 and to get us all through to that other end, wherever that might be, or whenever that might be rather, so that there is still a healthy, thriving, flourishing, you know, arts ecology here in Moreland when we see the other end of this pandemic. There are two grant categories. So you can either apply as an individual artist, so individuals, sole traders and freelancers, or you can apply as an arts organisation. And so that includes collectives, ensembles and not-for-profit arts businesses. So to apply for the arts organisation, you don't need to be a legal entity. It can be a not-for-profit ensemble where a group of artists, you know, a group of performers, for example, may want to put on a project. So the individual artists, we are offering up to $5,000 per grant, and with the arts organisations, it's up to $10,000. The programme is open to applicants whose primary business is in the art sector. And we've taken the definition as expressed by Australian Council, where this includes literature, music, theatre, musical theatre, opera, dance, circus, comedy, puppetry, arts festivals, visual arts and craft, community arts, experimental arts and Aboriginal Torres Strait Islander arts. But it really is about the primary business being in the art sector. And once again, supporting our local artists and arts organisations, our creative sector. Applicants can only make one grant application annually to either of these categories. And auspice body may apply on behalf of multiple applicants. So don't worry about, you know, having to find someone that is just, an auspice body specifically unique to yourself. You know, auspicing organisations like auspicious arts, it's perfectly fine for them to auspice, you know, multiple of your applications and things. I know that that sometimes comes up as a bit of a question about their eligibility. We're not, they're not applying, you are, you could all go to them, obviously all, you don't want to all go to them, but there are no limitations there. So in terms of eligibility requirements, there are four sort of shared requirements, and they are having appropriate public liability insurance, or a guarantee that will be obtained upon notification of successful funding, having no outstanding grant acquittals or outstanding debts owing to council. Obviously, it must address one or more of the objectives of the Flourish Arts Recovery Grant Programme, and to demonstrate the proposed activity is consistent with all local, state and federal laws, including the Charter of Human Rights and Responsibility Act 2006 and the Victorian Equal Opportunity Act 2010. So now, in addition to those four eligibility requirements, the two sort of, the differences between the individual and the organisation is that individual artists must be residents of Moreland and must apply for a grant through an incorporated auspice body. The arts organisation must be a Moreland-based arts organisation and can either be a group or organisation which is incorporated in its own right, cooperative, a charitable organisation, or auspice body incorporated entity. So these requirements differ slightly in that in the past, our arts activation and arts investment grants have been open to artists and arts organisations outside of Moreland on the proviso that they are providing a project or event for Moreland, for the Moreland community. In this one, given the nature of the pandemic and how difficult it is for our local artists and arts organisations, we're very much focusing on the artists and arts organisations must be based here in Moreland, so that we're supporting our own local ecology here. In terms of the funding that has been, that would be, the pool of funding rather, the arts activation, the money that would have otherwise have been used for arts activation and arts investment has been brought over into the Flourish Grant. But very excitedly, we have just recently found, found out through our recent budget approval, council's budget approval, we have been granted an additional $60,000 to top up the pool. So that's new money that's being added to the money that would have already been existing through the arts activation and arts investment. So that's over $160,000 for this particular grant for our local artists. So we're really, really, really very excited that we've been able to increase that pool for our local community. Very excited. So funding preferences. Obviously, again, in, as in all of our arts grants, you know, it is about enhancing Moreland's profile as a vibrant arts locality. It's about encouraging and championing diversity in Aboriginal culture, about demonstrating respectful partnerships with other artists, community groups and organisations. We want these applications to align strongly with commitments in Moreland's arts and culture strategy, the creative capital. We want you to demonstrate clear potential for impact on and/or growth of the art sector in Moreland, and obviously encourage environmental sustainability in line with council's policies. In addition to this, again, as a direct response to COVID-19, we are also interested to see a demonstration of financial hardship as a result of COVID-19, where applicants have been unable to obtain sufficient support through other COVID-19 support packages relative to the needs of the arts and artists, artists and arts organisations. So this is, you know, acknowledging that there are a lot of artists that are falling through the crack, as I say. And so it really is a matter of finding, to really supporting those artists that are not getting the opportunities elsewhere, or our local artists that are not getting opportunities elsewhere. In terms of how, you know, how we prove this, you know, we're really very flexible. It's just about demonstrating and talking to us and showing in your application that this is something that has occurred to you. It's not so much about hard lines or evidence of such, but you know, we just need to know what's going on, because obviously every single person and application's process will be different. So what can be funded? So we're looking at events, activities, projects, anything that responds to the current COVID-19 situation. We also are very much interested in these projects that provide an opportunity for community renewal post-COVID-19 lockdown. So you know, it's about the survival, but it's also about how, what we see at the other end of this pandemic. You know, looking at new ways of presenting work, of creating work, of your new relationships that can be forged in the local community. You know, supporting the generation of new and existing income streams. In the past, our grants have been about, have been sort of non-ticketed events have been sort of, has been one of the prerequisite, or at the very least, an event that can have some tickets available for free to members of our community who would otherwise be presented with a financial barrier. So that was something that was very strong in our previous grants. Obviously now, given that arts and arts organisations in Moreland and everywhere, we're really keenly aware of the fact that the opportunity to generate new income has just been really impacted. So for this particular Flourish Arts Recovery Grant, we've actually opened that up, and we will consider generation of new income streams that would otherwise perhaps not have been eligible. We are also really interested to see ways that artists and arts organisations are exploring new ways of engaging audiences. So you know, whether that be in a digital sort of platform, or whether that be in a socially responsible, distanced, sort of in-person way, really keen to hear some, you know, great ideas that allow our community to stay safe, but also to still have that, that interaction with one another, which is obviously also important. So the events, activities and projects would normally, would be within a year process. We are wanting to get this up and running as soon as possible. So we've actually extended the timeframe in which your activity can happen. So any time between November 2020, and which is when we'll be making the notifications, and December 2021. So you'll actually have almost 14 months to do your programme. We also allow purchase of capital, equipment and infrastructure, which includes again, the online digital technologies, if that's what you feel is important to you. And we'll also cover organisational costs, including rent, utilities, wages etcetera, that will assist in organisation's survival beyond lockdown. Again, this is quite different to what our previous grant applications have allowed. What will not be funded, and this is all in the guidelines, so I'll just skim through a few of the things. Obviously, projects held outside of Moreland. This is very much about looking after our own artists and arts organisations in the first instance. If people outside of Moreland can, you know, can benefit, that's great, wonderful. But we really, really want to support our local artists at this time. Obviously, anything that you choose to do absolutely needs to be in line with health measures and restrictions that slow the spread of COVID-19, and need to address any of the government and Commonwealth Government public health measures that are in place at the time of your eventual project. We won't be funding living expenses that can be covered by the Commonwealth Government's Jobseeker package, nor will we fund business expenses that have been covered by the Victorian Government's Business Support Fund or the Jobkeeper package, in line with our other grants, things, competitions, awards, sorry, excuse me. Awards, fundraising activities, fates, reunions, amateur or hobby pursuits are not to be funded, nor do we fund tertiary educational qualifications that are linked to academic assessment. Reimbursement of events and activities and projects that have already occurred, so this is about future funding, so not retrospective funding. And we won't fund initiatives that require ongoing funding from council to be sustained. So again, it needs to be something that's, a project that is a standalone project or a standalone project where you are able to continue the project in the future by, by looking at other means of support and other funding and partnership. We don't cover outstanding loans or debts. And we do, activities, events and projects that are partially or wholly funded by council via other grant programmes are also ineligible. We do not allow applicants with lobbied or canvas councillors or council officers. You, if you currently have a grant acquittal due, it needs to be acquitted before you can receive any additional funding. And applications that the recipients' organisations promote and/or benefit directly from electronic gaming machines or any form of gambling is also ineligible. So assessment wise, the assessment is done through Smiley Grants. And the, the things that our panel members are looking at is obviously how the activity aligns with grant objectives, the professional merits, so looking at the applicant and their, their professional merit in relation to the career stage and type of practice. Now, we're really aware that that's obviously going to be very different across different art forms and you know, the different stages of an artist's career. So you know, as an emerging artist, a mid-career artist and an established artist, you know, we take each of those applications on merit of where that artist is in their own personal career journey. The potential impact is obviously of great, great interest to us in terms of how it will benefit you as an artist in Moreland, but also the local Moreland community and the wider local artists and arts organisations in Moreland. So if it's something that, you know, you can partner with other artists that are within our municipality, how can it also benefit a wider group of people? The capacity, again, you know, it's one of those things where having a fantastic application in is one thing, but we need to be able to see that you're actually capable of making it come to fruition. And so that might be you yourself have the skills, or you know where your skills don't lie, and then you can engage a professional or someone with the skills that can either mentor you or take on a role in the project that, to enhance the project. The budget obviously needs to be balanced, realistic and show other income sources. So this is also, it's one of those things that as a grant officer, I often see very incomplete budgets. We would like to say everything, so even if it's not directly related to the money, I mean, you know, you might say, for example, be applying for $5,000 as an artist, but your project costs $20,000. That's fine, you know, show us where the other income is coming from and whether it's confirmed or not confirmed. Show us, you know, which bits of your budget will be covered by the money that you'd like us to fund. Because if you just include the, the budget items that we'll be looking after, that we'll be funding for you, we can't see that there has been a lot of thought put into it. We don't know what's missing, what's missing because you didn't know about it, or, or what is missing because it's just been covered by another fund. So give us a complete budget and clearly mark what's confirmed, not confirmed, and which components you're looking to have Moreland, the council fund. And support documents, now obviously, support documents is how long is a piece of string? It really depends on what your project is, as to what kind of support documents you may need. For an infrastructure project, you may need building permits or landlord permissions. You might acquire proof of ongoing lease, for example, for a gallery space. You know, letters of support, obviously, if you've got partners that, like business partners, oh yes, business partners, that are coming on board, like, you know, tell us about those, tell us how they'll be working with you, what they'll be providing to the project. If you are unsure as to what sort of support documents you need, please get in touch. As I said, email does tend to be better. And in this case, you know, give me a brief outline of what your project is about, so that I have a bit of background about what you're planning on doing. And then from that, we can then, I can have a chat to you about what support documents you might need to chase up. I think that's about it for assessments. So the process, and this is in line with all of our grant processes here. As the arts officer, I will go through each application and confirm that it's eligible. That also entails, if I see that there's something missing, I will get in touch with you and let you know that, that you may not be eligible at this point in time, but by providing this extra bit of information or, you know, this extra support document or something, then, sorry, I'm hearing some, some ding in the background there. Craig, could I actually ask you to just go offline and help with that, please? So, yeah, so I'll go, I'll go through the applications, confirm they're eligible, get in touch with you if they're not, if they're not eligible and can be made to be eligible. So you know, sometimes it's as simple as, you know, an updated budget or something like that. So I'll be in touch with you to ensure that you have every possible chance of having an eligible application. So then I take those, I prepare those applications for you and present them to a panel of at least four arts officers, sorry, four officers from across council and one representative of the Moreland Arts Advisory Committee. And those council offices and arts advisory committee member, they will actually assess the applications against the assessment criteria that we just spoke about. And the panel will be chaired by Craig, our Unit Manager of Arts and Culture. I then prepare a report from those panel discussions with recommendations for funding, which is then presented to the Director of Community Development for Endorsement. That then sort of continues going through the various council levels. And when I get approval and notification of approval, that's when we then start the next process and begin the agreements and signing up of agreements. So timeline, as you know, we open Thursday, the 9th of July, so last week, and we'll open until Sunday, the 9th of August. So midnight, Sunday, the 9th of August is our closing date. The, we're expecting that notifications will occur mid to, so early to mid October. And as I said, the projects have been undertaken between the 1st of November 2020 and the 31st of December 2021. Once your project is finished, you're going to need to acquit. So there are a couple of, a couple of stages of acquittal. We, we will have a financial, sorry, financial acquittal form attached to your Smiley Grants account, and that needs to be submitted within 30 days of the project completion. We also then have a short written acquittal report that also gets submitted through Smiley Grants to give a bit of a summary of what you've done. But one of the key acquittal requirements is actually the attendance at a minimum of three of our four meeting meetings which are scheduled throughout 2021. So this is a really great opportunity for artists to not only talk about their project, but also get to know one another and other artists in Moreland. So this started last year, so 2019. And at that time, we had arts activation and arts investment grant critical meetings separate. They were really well received, so artists really enjoying having the opportunity to sort of talk to one another, network. We presented, we had presenters come in and talk about various, you know, themes and topics and things. And so this year, we've actually expanded that, and we now invite all past grant recipients to attend these meetings. Only current applicants have to be there at three of the four meetings. All other applicants, all other, sorry, grant recipients, so previous grant recipients, it's their option. It's just there by choice if you want to. But they have been really useful, it's been a great way to sort of stay connected with artists and arts organisations in the local area. So from the council's point of view, it's, it's been a really nice way to develop these relationships. But from artists, the feedback that we're getting, it's also a great way for them to get to know one another. And there's been some really lovely sort of anecdotal stories of, you know, the artists helping each other outside of the meetings and actually sort of, you know, supporting one another in that way. So it's been really lovely. Now, in terms of these timelines, obviously, we're really keenly aware that things are changing, you know, daily. So one of the things that we have spent the last couple of months working on is working with our current arts activation and arts investment grant recipients and working out how we can adjust and be flexible in our grant programmes with existing grants to enable them to survive through the COVID-19 lockdown process. And you know, we're really aware that many of the projects are very different now to what they were when, when they applied. And while it is absolutely, you know, what we obviously want to be able to support the project that you are putting forward, and that's what we are assessing, we are really, we totally get that things will change. And so in that respect, I just cannot stress enough to you that we just need to keep those longer communication open. So if something does change because of COVID-19, because of lockdown, you know, just get in touch with me and we will work something out, okay? So don't, don't feel you've got to keep forging ahead with a project if it's just not safe to do so. So what to expect if successful? As I said, the notification of success will happen sort of early to mid October. We then do the signing of agreements through Smiley Grants, and it's this time that we also talk about any conditions, terms and conditions that might apply to your application. The payment of the grants will be in, in November, and the project delivery from the 1st of November to 31st of December. Oh, sorry, that's wrong, so 31st of December 2020, 2021, sorry. And as I said, the financial acquittal, a written report and the community practice meetings, which, which are the critical meetings. And they're tentatively scheduled for February, May, August and November, but obviously that might change as well. At the moment, they're being done online, so we'll see what happens. Next year should all be lovely and being able to see people face-to-face.
Angela, sorry, if I can just interrupt for a question. There's a chat going on in the meeting chat about individual artists needing to be auspiced. Can you just go back to that and maybe clarify that point?
Yes, okay. So all applications need to be through, like, need to be either an incorporated body or if not, which is the case for most artists. or individual independent artists, will need to be auspiced. So you will need an auspicing body such as auspicious arts. They're sort of the go to because they deal with artists literally on a daily basis. That is their role, to support artists through auspicing. But if you have another project partner that is an incorporated body that could auspice for you, then by all means, you know, you can continue to develop that relationship and work through another partner. If you do decide to do that and go through a non arts body auspicing organisation, get in touch and have a chat because there are a number of things you need to be aware of and I can advise sort of on a case by case scenario there. So what an auspicing body does is basically looks after financial, financial side of things for you. So the project will be yours, but the funding will be deposited into the auspicing body's bank account and they will then administer the funds for you. And this is where it can be quite different depending on whether you go through an organisation like auspicious arts who primarily works with artists and this is what they do and they have great systems in place to support artists. Or whether you go with another organisation that you already have an existing relationship with, but who may not be accustomed to being in auspice body. So it's those conversations that I'd like to have with people before you go down that track. Did that answer the question?
Yes, it did. I think so, Angela. Thank you.
Right. So in terms of, and we're almost at the end of the slide now and we'll get to questions anyway. So just in terms of other things that we're able to do then, those successful applicants, there are a couple of things we can help with in terms of marketing. So you can upload your event on the Moreland What's On calendar. It's obviously also our Arts Moreland e-newsletter, which at the moment we have been able to support local artists in the area by, you know, featuring and focusing on some of our local artists. There's also social media, obviously. So it's Facebook, we've got Arts Moreland and Arts, sorry, and Moreland City Council, so the two Facebook pages, Instagram and Twitter. Again, you know, you're able to send us all these details as a Moreland artist or arts organisation and we will try and promote your work there where possible as well. And down the bottom, you'll see what sort of information we need and where it goes to. And that's, I guess it's on the next page. And all these details can be found on the Arts and Creative Sector COVID nineteen Support webpage, which is a page that we put together, obviously in response to COVID nineteen, and houses a great assortment of opportunities for local artists, whether it be funding, mental health support, you know, just resources that you can tap into. So do have a look at that. And that, as I said, that also has the information about submitting your projects to our social media that we might be able to support you there. There are also a number of other council departments. So whereas Arts and Culture obviously has, you know, this particular arts grant this year, the Community Grants Department also has a number of grants that, while not specific to artists, are certainly open to artists. So do make sure you go and have a community arts, a community awards grants and funding link on our Moreland page. And the Business Moreland webpage there, again, will, obviously for the arts businesses, not, not specifically for arts organisations, but you can certainly apply there. And there have got a great amount of small business resources and things on there. So make sure that you, you know, take advantage of these, these opportunities for, for you in your art practice. So, questions? I might actually just see if I can see some faces again. So. Lovely to see some faces there. Lovely. So yes, if anyone has a question, feel free to pop your hand up and we will have a look. Just while you're doing that, let me just go through this chat and see if I've got any questions that I need to. Oh my goodness, you've all been busy, haven't you? I didn't see.
Angela, I think I've been able to answer most of the questions.
Oh, great. Okay, wonderful. So are there any other questions that anyone might have? Yes, Catalina? You're just on mute. Yep. Hi, Catalina, how are you?
Yeah, good, thank you very much. Look, I do have a question. You just mentioned that there are community grants and business grants as well. Can we apply to several grants at the same time? Or we only have, like, we can only apply to one of the grants at the time?
Each department has its own guidelines, but I think as a safe assumption, only one at a time. I know our grants, you can't be receiving funding from other council grants, other grant pools, but do check with each particular one.
So with your particular one, for example, if I apply for a community one, then I cannot apply for this one?
That's correct, yes. For the, for the same project, for the same project.
Oh, if it's a different project than I can? Yay, two separate projects. Okay, thank you very much.
Yes, Chris.
Oh, hi there. I was just wondering, is it worthwhile if you've previously applied for, say, something such as More Art, you put an application in and you weren't successful, is it worth trying to reapply with the same concepts or the same idea?
Yes, I believe so. Yep. If it fits the guidelines and the eligibility, then by all means, yes.
And just on that too, I guess, what I was wondering is, with the whole COVID situation and it changing so much, so regularly, if you've come up with a concept that is, involves community, engaging the community, working with the community and is a hands-on, I guess, community-based activity. What's, how does, like, you're going to have to obviously wait for certain restrictions to be lifted or things to change until you'd be able to, it's just for that sort of idea, it seems a little bit tricky.
Yeah, yes, is the, is the short answer. I mean, we are not, we won't say no, but, as I said in the, in the presentation, it just needs, we need to make sure that any project that happens adheres to any of the, you know, safety regulations that are, that have been presented by government. And obviously, we don't know what that is at any given moment. I mean, you know, we thought we were out of lockdown and now we're back into it. So it is about making your best effort and best judgment of the project and what might be possible. And then, as I said, we are, we will be flexible and work with you if, if you're successful and then we realise that, you know, it can't be just continually postponed or whatever, then we will work with you to, to come up with some sort of solution that you have.
Okay. And sorry, I'm being a bit of a hog. Could I just ask one more, one more thing? Is, let's say you're going to use your, or you're hoping to maybe have a visual, an art exhibition within Moreland and you need to apply to, let's, a gallery that's within Moreland. You go through the application process, well, depending on when the gallery's applications come out to apply for a show, how does that sort of, how would that fit in with the funding? So let, let's say, just sort of see what I'm saying. I guess I'm saying you might apply for a show, but you don't, the application isn't successful at the gallery. Yes.
We have actually had this question come up before. If you were to apply for a gallery place and a funding, like, one of our grants, and you weren't successful for that particular gallery, the grant would still be fine as long as it was another gallery in Moreland.
Yeah, right, yeah. Okay.
And sorry, I've just got a question from Anella. And hopefully that was on the same topic. And I think that answers your question that, yes, if you're applying for an exhibition at the Kurnahan Gallery, you can apply for a grant for that. And if you're not successful in that Kurnahan, in getting a space at the Kurnahan Gallery, you would then just need to find another space to present that work.
Yep.
And Tony, I saw your hand up, but I do have a couple of people that have put their hand up and R and Karen. So maybe go with R, whoever R is.
Hello, hi, it's me.
Hello.
Hi, thank you. Sorry, I didn't have time to write my whole name.
It's okay.
I think, I think you already answered partly my question about applying. If we already have applied for, I've applied for the Community Grants project, we have actually been successful, can I apply now for this? If it's a different project, yes.
Different project? Not, but not the same project? They do need to be, like, you know, uniquely different projects?
Of course, of course. And another question in regards to demonstrating the financial hardship caused by COVID nineteen. I imagine there will be a section in the application where you need to, to prove that somehow, is that correct? Or how, how else would we do that? There was.
Yeah, it's, it's not really a proof as such. I mean, we're not asking for a legal document or anything like that. It's really just about you, you know, telling us in your own words what the situation is.
How?
I mean, yeah, I mean, like, it's, you know, we've, and this was actually a question that we sort of thought about for quite some time. Just in terms of, you know, we want to make this process as unstressful as possible. And the idea of having to then insist that people go and, you know, create documentation proof that this is the case is just, no one needs that added stress right now, so. So it's just about you telling us honestly what's going on and we just have to take it at face value.
Yep, that's great. Thank you. That's all.
We've got Karen next, then Tony, then Simon.
Thanks, Angela. I want to know about the COVID situation stuff. I've got a project that would ideally involve community participation, but together in the same space, but it could be made into an audio thing that where people can do by themselves. In my application, should I state both versions or just one version? Not sure what to do about that.
Yeah, I actually, I actually think that would be a good idea. So go, like, focus on the main idea, but then include Plan B. That would be great. Yeah. Tony? Oh, you're on mute, Tony. Oh, you're still on mute. Oh, yeah, that's better, thanks.
Yes.
Hi, by the way.
Hi. Yeah, I'm wondering if one applies for a group situation, a community, but the, the outcome is for the local community, but can you involve artists from outside the area of Moreland?
As long as the primary applicant is a Moreland artist or Moreland arts-based organisation, yes, by all means, you know, you can bring on other colleagues.
Thank you very much, yes.
No worries. I think Simon was next and then Jessica.
The last question actually answered my question, so thank you.
Okay, no worries. Jessica, you've got your hand up?
Hello. Yes, I, I guess I just wondered for a little bit more information on that financial question. Like, for example, if we're receiving Jobkeeper, is that then considered that we're comfortable enough not to require a grant?
It's, that's a hard question to answer not knowing what the project is. Craig?
I mean, the simple answer is no. It doesn't exclude you. It would be taken into consideration when the assessment process. This grant programme was in part designed around funding artists and funding arts organisations that potentially have slipped through the gaps of other funding programmes. We're very aware there's a lot of COVID nineteen grants out there at the moment. What we wanted to do is try to make sure that this funding was taking into consideration artists and arts organisations that have fallen through the gaps. It doesn't exclude anybody, but it would be taken into consideration.
Okay, thanks.
We've also got a question from Catherine. So potentially Catherine, you might want to ask your question.
Hi. Yeah, my question's just about the eligibility concerning whether or not you're funded by other councils. So the presenting partner for my potential project is funded by City of Melbourne. Does that affect eligibility or is it only like you're not eligible if like your project directly has been funded by another council?
That's just, that's a great way of having other income. We absolutely support multiple income streams. But as long as you, and like, as long as the project and you are based in Moreland, then that's fine.
Okay, well, and just while I've got the video, this perhaps is not a question directly for you, but I may as well ask it here. Does, I mean, I think a lot of people will be considering going through auspicious arts. Do, do you know if they, like, if you're just putting in an application, do they, do you have to make any payment to them? Or do they only take money out if you get the?
Yeah. So basically, the, the way they work is, and I would suggest if you're thinking of doing this, that you get in touch with them sooner rather than later because there are a number of things that have to go in process before you actually press submit. But they will charge you, and I think it's a five percent fee of the total income.
Yep.
But you get your money's value worth. I mean, like, the support that they're able to provide.
There's no fee for applying. It's only if you get the grant and five percent.
Correct, yes. Yeah, yes. No, they don't charge you unless you get the money and that money goes through their account.
Okay, cool. Great, thank you.
No worries.
So we have Jessica with a question.
I think Jessica already asked her question.
I do think that was me. Thank you.
Okay, great. And we also have R.
Yeah, no, R has also, they just haven't.
Okay, I'll lower those hands. That's okay.
Any other questions?
We do have a question in the chat. If your only other income source for the project is potential sales of artwork, which is, perhaps Karen, you want to ask this question?
Hi, can you hear me? I don't know how to turn my camera on.
That's okay, we can hear you though.
Yeah, so I am a full-time artist, right? I don't, I'm not eligible for Jobkeeper or Jobseeker because I'm looking after my kid who's got a disability, so I'm on the care repayment. And that pretty much covers my living expenses to a point. So I very heavily rely on sales of artwork to actually live, right? So, and, and also obviously do projects. So I'm just wondering how to assess that or how to provide that kind of evidence in, in, in the application. Because obviously, sales of artwork already have dropped enormously, you know. But yeah, for, for an artist like me, this is how I make a living, you know, like, funding is, is few and far between and really only helps with pretty much getting projects off the ground. So in the application, you know, financial hardship can be proven, obviously, by, you know, the, the situation I'm in. But basically, projected income is now very much affected by COVID. Will that be taken into consideration?
It certainly will and it won't, and also everyone will be in that sort of similar vote that everyone is being impacted. I think in terms of how you show that, I guess it's about showing what sales might have been in the past and just acknowledging that that has changed and, you know, provide us with whatever, whatever sort of anecdotal proof you can, you can find, really. I mean, there's not really a right or wrong answer for that one. It's so very different for everyone.
I, I just want to interject here and just sort of on this notion of financial hardship. We certainly recognise that financial hardship is, is sort of a grey area here. You may have an arts organisation that's received a two thousand dollar grant. That's not going to prohibit you from anything here because we recognise that everyone has different needs and therefore that question of financial hardship is, is being assessed that way. So it's really just about letting us know what circumstances you're currently facing. But, you know, if you have received Jobseeker, that's not going to prohibit you from applying for these grants or receiving them. If you have received a two thousand dollar grant for a project before, that's not going to prohibit you from applying or getting this grant. I just wanted to put that out there and make sure that was clear. Now we have a few more hands up.
Yep. So there's Kate and then Cathy. I don't, I didn't see who put their hand up first, sorry. So Kate, I can see you.
Hi.
Hi.
I just back to the question around, normally events are put on for free. And so with, with, with my idea, the money for the grant would go for the infrastructure and, you know, a small amount to pay performers to come in. But the idea would be that ticket sales, you know, socially, you know, because I've, I've got a plan to be able to socially isolate and blah, blah, blah. But that would then pay everybody, you know, literally divided between anybody that was involved in the project. So did that mean? No, I shouldn't be.
No, no, a couple of things there, just that we, we would like to see, and that sort of sounded like a co-op sort of thing where it's a share of the doors, I think.
Well, it's basically, obviously, to make anything big, you're not going to have money to pay people equity wages. So I have so many things going, would perform, please, if you can get it up, do it. And my way of going, I think good conscious to do that would be that, obviously, anything that was made from it would immediately be split between everybody evenly, including your Texan and anybody that was involved. Because that's the situation we're in.
The first thing is that we like to see people being paid according to equity. So that kind of needs to be addressed first. The second thing, what we have done in the past is where, you know, it was a project that had some ticketing and it was the, the ticket prices for this particular project that I had in mind was, was so very low anyway. But even, you know, even $5 can be a significant amount for, you know, a family of four who just don't have that $20. So what we did with that project is that we ensured that there was a percentage of tickets that were available for free to members of our community and we then put the project artists in, in touch with a number of community organisations that were able to then distribute those tickets. So it's not a, no, you can't do that, but there might be additional work where we need to make sure that we can actually, you know, assist you by saying, yes, you can generate an income from your tickets, but also ensure that our community members are able to access it regardless of any financial barriers and stuff, which is obviously really important. Did that answer your question?
Yeah, yeah, I think so. Yeah.
Thank you. Cathy? Are you on mute at the moment?
Hello, sorry about that. My question is, relates to Melbourne Fringe dates being in November, the 12th to the 29th. Would, would a project that was potentially part of the Fringe within Moreland be eligible for this, for this programme?
Yes, yes. The aim is that we have notifications out sort of early to mid October and so projects can start from the first of November. I mean, it'll be a tight turnaround. It might be worth you making sure that you have a backup plan, just in case, but.
But the plan is. It was registered anyway as part of Fringe to be included, so you couldn't wait till October. But I just wasn't sure whether, because I know Moreland's supporting the Fringe through the micro grants. I just wasn't sure whether this kind of project was considered to be part of the, yeah, if that was eligible, that's all. Thank you.
Oh, sorry. Are you saying whether it's eligible because if you were to receive a micro grant?
No, no, more.
Just as in the, the timeframe?
More about the timeframe and whether Moreland, with the purpose of these Flourish grants was different to sort of supporting a project that was happening in Fringe if it met other, the other criteria.
No, we're more than happy to support something that happens during Fringe.
Okay, great. Thank you.
We've got a question from VJW.
Hi there, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
And I just have a very, very quick question about the definition of visual arts. And I know that you indicated that it related back to the Australia Council definition. I'm just wondering if there's any place you can point me to, to really kind of fine tune that. I guess I'm looking at more a spatial architecture, visual arts kind of bridge. And I just want to know how I define my project as such.
I'm fairly flexible.
Okay.
Yes, we're fairly flexible. And perhaps that's one question we can touch base with you offline. There's another couple of questions I've got here on similar topics around art forms, even filmmaking, that we'll sort of take offline and have that conversation.
Okay, great.
Generally, we try to be quite flexible, so.
Okay, fabulous. Thank you.
And we've also got a question from Bailey Page and Monique.
And I think Simon also has his hand up, is that right? Yep.
Hi. So the three of us, we create digital content for businesses. And we're up in Faulkner and at the moment, we're seeing a big push with local businesses to get their socials more active, because business isn't booming as most places are. We're just wondering if we could use this grant to maybe, like, create video and photo content for these businesses so they don't have to pay, because with the $10,000 organisation grant, that could cover five different businesses.
I feel like it might be worthwhile you having a look at the business grants and community, yeah, and the business grants actually. If you have a look at what they have to offer, I think that might suit you better. It's not to say that this is not, like, it's not possible for you to apply through the Flourish. I just feel there might be some better alignment. And in fact, better alignment, but also perhaps additional support mechanisms that that particular department and council has, that maybe, may actually even make the project more successful overall. And when I say successful, I'm not saying, you know, like, winner winner sort of thing about actually being engaged with the community, with the community, with the businesses, where everyone just gets a fuller, more rich sort of experience out of it.
Okay.
Would that be right, Craig?
Yes, no. I mean, that's certainly something we can follow up with you about, but yes, I think that answer is correct.
All right.
You would certainly be eligible to apply, but there may be stronger ways for you to get that funding.
Okay.
We have two questions, two hands up. So Bailey Page and Monique.
And we've still got Simon. I can see Simon's hand. I can't see any of the others.
That hand is down. So we've got a question by, I think it's Hank.
Correct. Hello, just seeking some clarification about being like a full-time artist. I am, would be considered an emerging artist. I've got a couple of shows under my belt, but I've definitely been working other jobs to, to, to fund those shows. So am I still eligible? Like, I've got my ABN, I've done, put a bunch of show, put a couple of shows on. Like, am I still considered eligible, even though, you know, I haven't been a full-time artist for, you know, any length of time?
We love emerging artists, by all means, yes. Yeah, no, it's, we're, we're really, I mean, you know, everyone was an emerging artist at some point. We all go through the various, you know, the journey of an artist. So you're absolutely welcome to apply.
Thank you.
And we have one final question in the comments section, Freya.
Can we just go to Simon? He's had his hand up for ages.
Okay, sorry, I can't actually see Simon. He's not appearing in my list of hands up.
So just before you begin, Simon, if, if people can just make sure they either press that little raise your hand button, because then that actually comes up in the participants thing and we know that you've been, that you're there. Or as Craig is saying, to write something in the chat section. So yes, please go ahead, Simon.
This may have been answered beforehand, but I just wanted to clarify. Am I able to apply for both Flourish and Community? And will, will I get a response from both of them and then choose between the two? Is that, is that a thing?
Are we talking about the same project or two different projects?
Yeah, it would be the same project for Community and Flourish.
Okay, then you won't, you won't be able to get both. And it would then just be a matter of, and I, I can't give you an answer right now because I don't know all of the community grants deadlines and, and sort of due dates and notification dates. But it would be, if you received one, you wouldn't be able to receive the other. I just don't know which one is notified first.
Okay, but you're, you're able to apply for both, but you don't, you'll only choose one of them?
Correct.
Okay, cool. Great. Thank you.
Great. And sorry, we'll just go to Freya now. Is it okay if you live outside of Moreland by five houses, but your event will be in Moreland?
Oh, I don't know. Gosh, five houses, that's. If I was you, I'd put it in application.
Perhaps that's one that we can talk about offline. So Freya, if you want to get in touch with us, or we'll have your, we'll have your details from registering for the session. I'll note that down and we can have a think about it. I mean, we'll get in touch with you.
And if you haven't heard from us, give me an email and you'll find the emails in the Eventbrite emails that you received about this information session, just to follow it up.
Great, that gives you all the questions we have.
Okay, so we're a little bit over time. Sorry about that, everyone. And as I said, like, I mean, if anyone does have any more questions, please feel free to give me a call or an email. As I said, email is better. And with your email, give me a bit of a project background so that I have an idea of what you're wanting to discuss. And then I'll either shoot you back an email with a response or get in touch with you on the phone. I'm only two days a week and, you know, working from home, sort of, the hours change according to meetings and things like that. So best of luck to everyone. I hope you got something out of today. And I look forward to hearing from you and receiving your applications. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.